Seven o'clock, Congress meeting to order.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Always here.
Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Chaucie?
Here.
Ms. Carl? Mr. D. Francesco?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Tyson Wright? Mr. Valeski?
Here.
Stand for the brand new windows. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which was established on the nation under God, in the soul with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Recommend approval of meeting minutes, April 11 and 13.
Sumo second.
All in fairness, say aye.
Aye.
Presentation this evening, we have student representatives. Audrey, you want to go first?
Hello, I'm Audrey Bullock and I'm here to update you on what is happening in Cambridge Springs. Excuse my voice, I just ran, so. Prom will be held tomorrow, May 12th, at the Kelly Ballroom at the Riverside Golf Course from 6:30 PM to 10:00 PM. Prom goers will eat a delicious dinner before dancing the night away. After prom, CSHS will host Prom Till Dawn from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM, a fun experience completely free for all students and a safe space for after-prom activities. These activities will include several tournaments the students can compete in, like Mario Kart, volleyball, chess, and more. Unlimited food and drinks will be provided for students and throughout the night, there will be opportunities to win grand prizes, including several TVs, AirPods, cash, and way more. Prom Till Dawn was put in place to keep CSHS students safe from other prom parties while also encouraging fun and school spirit. A huge thank you to everyone who helped put Prom and Prom Till Dawn together and to our community who have donated thousands of dollars into making this night possible. Students have been participating in a number of other activities at CSHS. Cambridge Cares will be held May 23rd and students, faculty, and staff are looking forward to helping with cleaning and supporting their hometown. Anatomy students had a great opportunity when they traveled to the Mercyhurst University Cadaver Lab on April 19th, where they learned hands-on about the human body. Another fun trip was May 4th, when students from several senior high science classes traveled to Kat's Natural Area to plant trees while braving the rain and learning about the earth. About a week ago, the Cambridge High Q team participated in the Penncrest High Q competition, where they earned third place. We are proud of the hard work they put in to prepare for this competition. We would also like to congratulate all our test takers in the high school. Whether it's the SAT, AP tests, PSSAs, or others, students have been studying hard for positive test scores to end the year on. Also, a huge congratulations to Isabel Yasencheck and Ava Greenewall for earning a spot at the National History Day Competition located in Washington DC. We are so proud of your hard work and how it paid off so well. Our spring sports teams have been having a very successful season. The baseball team had the opportunity to play at UPMC Park in Erie against Iroquois, where they beat them in extra innings on their senior night. Congratulations to Tristan Misager for the first home run of the season at the game last night. The softball team played four consecutive games over last weekend and this alone is proof of how hard our athletes work at CSHS. The team won three of the four games they played. The track team just had their last regular meet at Meathville this evening, which is actually where I just came from. We have had one runner qualify for districts in the 200 and 400 meter runs. Junior Josh Simpson will travel to districts on May 20th to compete against other top-notch runners, along with his team to support him. We have had many awesome personal records set this season and the track coach believes this talent will carry the team into a successful cross-country season next fall. The boys volleyball team has also had a very successful season, growing individually as well as as a team. Now for news from the elementary school. Students in grades 3 through 6 recently completed two weeks of state testing in ELA and MAP. Grade 4 also completed science PSSAs. Students continue to model be proud, be blue behavior at the elementary school by being brave leaders who are understanding and strive towards personal excellence. Recent blue slip incentives have included a fishing frenzy game and just yesterday, a new punch-a-prize blue slip recognition program started. 5th grade authors recently kicked off an exciting graphic novel writing unit. Mrs. Jordina teaches writing and Mrs. Walsh, teaching art, are collaborating to help students grow in both of these genres at the same time. Grade 3 writers are participating in a favorite unit of study on fairy tales and writing skills related. 6th grade scientists are excited that their aquaponics equipment that was previously delayed is now due to arrive next week. BP Light Source is a new corporation moving to our area and they will be installing solar panels on land that they have leased from many of our Cambridge Springs and surrounding area neighbors. BP Light Source will be at CES on May 17th to make a generous donation to the PTO and the funds will be put toward new playground equipment and improvement of current equipment. Offcoming events at the elementary school include the 4th through 6th grade spring showcase concert being held at CSHS on Wednesday, May 24th, and Field Day on Thursday, May 25th. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Zorian?
Hello, my name is Lorraine Orzorian Edwards and I'm here to update you on what is happening at Sagertown High School. AP testing is underway. We would like to wish the best of luck to all AP testers and recognize their hard work. It is also PSSA and Keystone testing season. We'd like to give a shout-out to the teachers and staff who prepare students for these exams. The Panther Press held a candidate forum with many candidates for the Penncrest School Board on Monday, May 1st in the auditorium. During the forum, candidates were asked a variety of questions... Sorry. Were asked a variety of questions from a list submitted through our media outlets. You can view the recording on our YouTube channel, The Panther Press ASHS. SPA, Sagertown Pride Alliance, held its annual Day of Silence Wednesday. On Wednesday, May 2nd, sorry. This is a national movement with GLSEN to protest the discrimination against LGBTQIA+ students in schools across the country. For more information, visit the GLSEN website. Penncrest High Q was held on May 3rd at Maplewood High School. We would like to thank them for hosting the event this year. Sagertown placed first with 210 points. Maplewood placed second with 100 points and Cambridge Springs placed third with 30 points. Amazing job, everyone. Senior Kylie Beck placed first in the Highmark Carrying Place Children's Grief Awareness Poster Competition. She was the regional winner. She was given a $100 Amazon gift card, a bag, and a certificate. Congratulations Kylie. Senior Luthia Sweeney won $1,000... Won $1,000 from the PA School Counselor Association for her essay, "Recognizing Guidance Counselor Kristi Mogul." Great work, Luthia. The marketing and anatomy classes had a field trip on May 10th to see the Erie Seawolves game against the Richmond Flying Squirrels. The marketing class paid for the tickets for their proceeds from selling crewnecks and pens earlier in the school year. The Envirothon theme... Sorry, the Envirothon team went to the... Went on a field trip today to go plant trees in Dixonburg. Teacher Appreciation Week is also underway at Sagertown High School. Principal Dr. Howlett created spirit days in order to recognize our teachers. Monday was memo day, where the students gave meaningful notes to their teachers. Tuesday was twin day, where students dressed up as their favorite teacher. Wednesday was snap and pick day, where students submitted a photo of them and their favorite teacher to be displayed on the official Sagertown Facebook page. Today was help a teacher day, where students offered assistance to their teachers. And Friday is food day, where students will bring a treat for their favorite teachers. Thank you for all you do, teachers. You are greatly appreciated. Spring sports are in full swing. The baseball team is currently 13-2 overall and 12-1 in Region 3. They have a two-game lead in the region. The softball team is 10-2 overall and 9-2 in Region 2. They play at Youngsville tomorrow night. The volleyball team defeated Rocky Grove in three sets on Tuesday. And they play Cathedral Prep tonight. They are 6-3 in the region. Tomorrow at 7:00 PM will be the SES 6th grade musical. This year's production is the Phantom Tool... Tool... The Phantom Tool Booth. Tickets are $5 and can be purchased at the door. We encourage everyone to come out for the show. Thank you for your time and we look forward to updating you next month. In the meantime, follow us at thepantherpress.com.
Student representatives, before?
Good evening, members of the board, administration, community members, and esteemed teachers of Penncrest. As you know, I speak to you monthly, often reminding you and encouraging you to engage in dialogue with the students and the families. Also, I ask you to consult the experienced, the experts in education, your teachers. You might recall in a past meeting that I shared with you that your professional staff already has 174 out of your 217 at a master's degree level. That's 80%. That's a pretty qualified staff. We also, which is probably more telling, we have 65% of our teachers who have achieved 15 years of experience or more in the classroom. Mine's a little bit bigger, longer number than that, but I'm just saying, we have some very dedicated and experienced teachers. That experience also points to a commitment to our Penncrest students. Seems the term stakeholders certainly applies to your teachers. This idea of stakeholders got me thinking. Do you know how seriously teachers take their role as stakeholders? To be 100% invested academically, emotionally, and financially? Honestly, I thought I had an idea and then I looked at the data. I was overwhelmed. Did you know that several of the teachers have volunteered their time as unpaid coaches for athletics and academic activities? Take one example, it's softball season. We have several volunteer softball coaches. Think about it, six days a week, a minimum of three hours a day, and a season approximately 12 weeks, maybe longer because we have some pretty good teams in Penncrest. That is 216 hours plus, all the driving to events on their own. I would say that's an invested teacher in your students. And I could give you countless examples of academic coaches as well. Did you know that an estimated 1 to 4 hours a day beyond the workday has been spent by your teachers helping kids who struggle and reaching out to support families or providing activities to supplement the curriculum? I heard from a kindergarten teacher who gets here every day at 6:45 and often stays until 5:00 to ensure quality experience for her students. When I did the math on that, even an hour a day is giving back to Penncrest families. And that totals to about 190 hours or a week and a half if you're going around the clock. But if you're talking about the example of my kindergarten colleague, that would be more like 500 hours or two weeks around the clock. Sounds to me like a person taking stake in her students. Did you know that teachers have spent a range of 5... I'm sorry, $50 to $500 of their own money for kids and families in need for supplies in their classrooms? One teacher even reported buying a suit for a student who needed one for graduation and an interview for college. The teacher said, "Please don't share my name. I don't want them to know that it was me." Who does that kind of stuff? The answer is your teachers. So this week, as we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week, it is only fitting that I ask you at this time to join me in applauding your teachers who show over and over again the stake they take in Penncrest students. If any of you are in the house, would you please stand? Teachers that are here tonight, would you please stand so we can recognize you again? Thank you for joining me in that. Finally, might I challenge you to think how we do show appreciations? I know these teachers are invested in Penncrest, but please don't take that for granted. Realize that we are still here, giving well above and beyond, even without a contract. Please show them that our board appreciates them by pushing for a fair contract settlement. Thank you.
We have several student presentations this evening.
I was just gonna go ahead and do...
Go ahead, man. I like your eyes. Go ahead.
I found Russell to have most of them.
All right, well, the next part, and I'm probably bursting with pride for this, is we are going to give awards to students who competed at the state competition in journalism. And from Cambridge Springs High School, I'd like to bring up Audrey Bullock. Audrey is the editor-in-chief of the Pitchfork. She competed at Penn State Baron in the regional competition and at that point was ranked second in the state of Pennsylvania. We went on with some Sagertown comrades to the state competition in Penn State and she finished fourth there. So, a round of applause for our junior.
Next up, Penncrest would like to recognize Panther Press members that went to the state competition. First, we have Zorian Edwards. She was 4th place Broadcast Script Writing, Pennsylvania School Press Association. Next, we have Mr. Jace De Giacomo, 2nd place Feature Writing, Pennsylvania School Press Association. Next is Elena Merchant, Panther Press, 5th place Literary Magazine Artwork from the PA School Press Association. Next is Brendan McRae. He got 6th place News Writing from the PA School Press Association. Luthia Sweeney, 4th place Newspaper Photography, PA School Press Association. Nate Lee, 6th place Editorial Cartoon. And Kaylee Reynolds, 4th place Literary Magazine Artwork.
Class?
The next recognition we'd like to have is for Andrea Palatas, who cannot be here tonight, from Maplewood High School. She is the Maplewood High School nomination for Northwest PA Class Act Emerging Leader. The criteria for selection here is based on the student's effort, character, citizenship, responsibility, respect for peers, and serving as a positive influential representative of his or her school community. Andrea has served as student council governor, senior class vice president, and Maplewood key club president, and a leader in school spirit and pride. At all times, Andrea is reliable and offers herself when she is needed. Andrea has an impeccable work ethic and performs at elevated academic levels. She not only supports herself in her academic endeavors, but she also tends to lift up her peers as well, both socially and academically. Along with a plethora of community service hours, Andrea manages to find time to hold employment as well. Based on Andrea's steady, dedicated character, I would recommend her for any leadership opportunities or to represent her school as an outstanding contributor to the community and greater good. Congratulations, Andrea. Next up, we have the History Day Competition.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bethany Kissel. I'm a social studies teacher here at Cambridge Springs High School and I'm here to tell you a little bit about the accomplishments of our History Day Club. History Day Club was started by John Workmeister and Sarah Thompson. Well, John Workmeister back in the 70s, maybe? It's been around a long time. He just retired last year and Sarah Thompson assisted him with the program up until she retired last year as well. So I took it over, but I have to say that the students who participated this year were very driven and everything was on them because I really didn't know what I was doing getting into it. They knew much more about it than I did. So we started working at the beginning of the year. History Day, the way it works is you're given a theme. This year's front theme was "Frontiers in History" and you can really pick any topic you'd like and you can do a series of different projects. You can write a paper, create a documentary, create a website, or in the case of the four students that competed from Cambridge, you can create an exhibit. So think the, you know, tri-fold poster, but way, way, way fancier. And so we have four students. We have here with us tonight Isabel Yasencheck and Ava Greenewall. They competed as a group exhibit. And then Katie Hillius is a 9th grader and she competed as an individual exhibit. And Peyton Ayers competed as an individual exhibit as well. We start our competition at the regional level and they competed at Allegheny College...
April?
Yeah, sometime in April. Ava and Isabel took first place in the region in group exhibit. Peyton took first place in individual and Katie took second place. So they did very well there, which meant that all of them got to go to Scranton... Why Scranton? I don't know. But Scranton, where the state competition was held. And that is where Peyton... I'm sorry, Peyton and Katie, Isabel and Ava, all competed again in their respective categories. And Ava and Isabel placed first in the entire state for their group exhibit. It was really quite remarkable. They were up against some pretty stiff competition and they worked very, very hard. So by placing first, that means that they get to move on to the national competition, which will be held in Washington DC. Will be heading down the Sunday after the last week of school. The students will get to stay in the dorms at the University of Maryland, which they're looking forward to. And it'll be about like a week-long competition and people come from not just around the country, but Puerto Rico and other countries even, to participate in this. In addition, which was very exciting for us to find out, the head of History Day in Pennsylvania chose their exhibit to be put on display with other History Day exhibits from around the country at the Smithsonian National Museum of American History. So they will be at the Smithsonian, so they can brag on that on their resume someday. But they'll actually just put their display up at the Smithsonian Museum. They'll get to spend the morning witnessing a citizenship naturalization ceremony, which is very, very awesome. And then they'll spend the afternoon in the museum talking to the other patrons and telling average tourists who are coming to the museum about their project and their work. And the week ends on Thursday of that week and then we'll head for home, but it's sure to be a fantastic time. We appreciate the district's help in funding these trips because it is a massive experience and they work very, very hard and definitely deserve not only our congratulations, but our support in going outside above and beyond the regular school day and regular academics to compete at such a high level. So, congratulations to them and thank you very much.
Congratulations to everybody. Thank you so much for presenting yourselves in the public and the community as such a high standard. So thank you and congratulations again. We're gonna move into a portion of our general citizens' comments. We have two registered speakers who can speak for five minutes. After that, we'll open it up for two-minute sessions on agenda items. There will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting on non-agenda items. So if we can keep the first set of comments to agenda items. Mr. Anderson, you are first.
Thank you. Are we on? I've been a long time before I've been in front of the board and thank you for your evening and your time and many sacrifices. So thanks for listening to my thoughts. Not necessarily all pearls of wisdom, some will bounce off, maybe one or two will land in a good place. All here share a mutual concern. The task of educating our young people, the students. To that end, trained and educated professionals are provided and learning resources afforded. Various mandates are followed and it's not an easy task. It isn't. Getting the job done best is like a bolageel. Something's always moving, nothing's static. You know that from your own experiences. Now, here's my point. Directors and for that matter even director wannabes that might call themselves candidates, you cannot achieve your lofty goals and those things that Penncrest needs, do it yourself, learn yourself, experience will teach me everything I need to know. It doesn't happen that way. You're charged as a district policymaker and facilitators under the Pennsylvania Public School Code, layers of state and federal regulations and mandates, court decisions, students' needs and public pressures means even a good juggler is gonna drop something along the way. I did and you likely will also. Utilize the PSBA to teach you. PSBA seminars often remote and sometimes local. The intermediate unit, for example, sponsors some how the local school districts in the evenings. Research services, administrative and staff recruitment. I saw five superintendents in my 18 years. I'm not proud of it, that's the way the cookie crumbles sometimes. PSBA was a big help to us. Consulting services, advocacy, legal reviews, tools to enable you to do your best. So go to the website. PSBA seminar topics can be both timely and functional. They can teach you things you need to know about board superintendent relations, public meeting decor, executing the agenda, committee functions, sunshine law issues, district finances, legislative updates, planning practices, policy development, and it goes on. It's a very practical, hands-on information. How often do you speak or share, yet even commiserate with other district school directors? PSBA seminars typically are set up or structured to facilitate just that kind of time. Another valuable learning opportunity indeed. Why reinvent the wheel? Lean what that... Lean from others, their experiences, and share your own. You're a PSVA member individually when Penncrest is a member of PSVA. You personally, as a school director, can access much of PSVA's resources, especially educational offerings like the seminars and research papers, white papers. PSVA is a tool, so use it. Making yourself a better board member will make Penncrest a better school district and produce better student outcomes. Frankly, you and Penncrest can afford not to do it. Yes, there were a few times even in my time that the district didn't always reimburse me, but I invested the time. It was well worth it. Well, it's budget time. And frankly, I have some anxieties. Current budget discussions leave me just a little bit anxious. And should I be? Please budget PSBA dollars. Invest in your own continuing education. Now, about that phrase I use, "student outcomes." At least in my time, board members share a little time on a stage with the graduates. You'll very soon present a diploma to hundreds of Penncrest graduates. Be mindful that you're not just handing them a pretty framed piece of paper. Rather, you're handing them a key that opens many doors. Vocations, higher education, personal accomplishments. And I and we want to thank you for that part you played in creating just that moment for those students. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was not feeling well, so since I'm speaking into a mic, I put a mask on. Good evening, Carla Brown. I live in Cambridge Springs. Monday, I stated the belief that meeting minutes to be approved rank. I stated hopefulness. The policy committee meeting minutes from April 11th would be added by tonight. They were not. I'm not sure why this is. Perhaps this is because there was no official quorum. A quorum in our policies is considered a majority of the committee. Committees can have no more than four board members and both the president of the board and the superintendent are ex-officio members of all committees. As far as I'm aware, the appointed policy committee members are David Valeski's chairperson, Amber Tyson Wright, and Bob Johnston. Ex-officio members, as a general rule of thumb, have voting rights unless otherwise specified. It is unclear in our policies if the superintendent has a vote at committee meetings. Again, Luigi Di Francisco and Dr. Glasspool are ex-officio. In attendance at the meeting that was advertised and occurred on April 11th were Dr. Glasspool, Luigi Di Francisco, David Valeski, and Tim Brown. I believe Mr. Bryant came late, but the points I'm making were discussed prior to his arrival, I believe. I believe. While I appreciate Mr. Brown and Mr. Bryant believing this was important enough to attend and I commend them for that, as far as I know, they are not members of the committee. Well, members of the committee are not listed anywhere that I could find on the website or mentioned in any board meeting since the December reorganization meeting as far as I recall. So perhaps I'm wrong about that. The Education Committee submitted its meeting minutes from its public meeting on March 7th for approval. The Policy Committee meeting, if unofficial, certainly took actions that are of interest and importance to the public. If considered official due to Dr. Glasspool having a vote, it should have had minutes that were approved by the board tonight. They decided there would be no change of policy that would allow for petitions to be officially recognized by the board. And they decided to bring Policy 905 to the board as a whole for removal. First petitions. Petitions are a First Amendment right. While that right does not afford for guaranteed results, what it is having a right if it is never officially recognized by the government. Official recognition of petitions was suggested by a board member so that there are appropriate consideration and discussion by the board if enough of the public signs the petition. The decision to not recognize them was not brought before the board as a whole last month or this month for a vote. It was suggested by administration and agreed to by the three board members present. Second, Policy 905. In February, it was stated by a board member that a citizens committee would move forward and that the board was trying to draw up an agenda. It was suggested that citizens, along with PTOs and boosters, start discussing and coming up with ideas. It was also stated that there would be some kind of open discussion or forum after a couple of changes on the board's end. In March, when no progress toward this had been made, I stated the belief that creating the committee should be fairly easily, easily done with the people and the membership bank mentioned in Policy 905. In April, at this policy committee meeting, it was suggested by administration that it be removed due to being outdated, too lengthy, and no statutes or law requiring it. So it came up for a first read at the board meeting last month for removal and is up for a final approval for removal this month. To date, there has been no announcement or postings for this open discussion or forum with the public and the school organizations to occur. There has been no proposed agenda for the citizens committee submitted to the board either. I would urge board members to stay this vote until next month and ensure these two things are done first. I am not sure what is so difficult with creating a citizens committee now than before. This policy has been in place a long time. It's taken more than four months to bring it to fruition. There have been citizens committees in the past. It seems there are some serious issues here that should be and need to be addressed quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Two minutes to do so. Just need to calm down and just state your name and your municipality.
Hello, I'm John Kerr. I'm from Hayfield Township. Represented, my children go to Sacred Town schools. And I want to speak tonight about an agenda item, I believe it's getting voted on tonight, about the special needs program at Sacred Town. I believe it's going to be moved, it was proposed to be moved to Maplewood, if I'm not mistaken. I have a special needs child. He is in Mrs. Crawl's class. I just built a house in Sacred Town on South Lee Road, right around the corner from the school. Is there any other parents that are represented by special needs children? Can you please stand up for a moment? Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Appreciate you coming. At any rate, I'm a fiscal conservative. I'm a conservative in many aspects of the work. And I appreciate the idea of being responsible with your budget, being a good steward of taxpayer monies. I appreciate that. I do. And I know that's not an easy task as a monumental undertaking you guys have to work on constantly. That being said, in order to move my child from Sacred Town and he's going to lose his teacher, all his aides that he knows, he has enough difficulties in life, he will never lead a normal life. It affects my family in a massive way. I have four children. I understand perhaps it would possibly save some money. How much money, number one, I would like to know how much money are we looking to save in, in moving, getting rid of the life skills program and moving it to Maplewood? And I just wanted to let my opinion be known. I appreciate your time. I am dead set against this, obviously. In order to reach this decision as well, how many years are we going back with data to reach these numbers, right? For example, maybe there's more children in Maplewood this year with special needs. When will that change? We don't really know. At that point, what are we going to do? Move them back to Sacred Town? Keep moving things around? My child also has special therapies. My wife goes and picks him up right now. She drives about three and a half miles from our house to the school and drives him to Meadville four times a week. That's, that's a simple drive. It's very simple. To go from my house to Maplewood and back to Meadville four times a week, it's a monumental task for my family and I. It really is. I would just really appreciate everyone's consideration here. It's gonna upset a lot of lives, a lot of people, a lot of difficulties when we already face them. And I'm not here, you know, crying whatever it is, my family, I love them to death. I would do whatever it takes to get what they need. Always have and always will. But I would really like the school board and everyone to consider everyone else, all the families, the teachers, the aides. It's a big deal to me. It's a big deal to my family. Can anyone speak to that? Can anyone, how much money are we looking to save? Is it, I'm gonna assume that's the reason for moving from Sacred Town to Maplewood?
No. It's not for cost savings.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate your answer to that. And that, that's, I really appreciate that. Can you give me another reason? Is there a reason?
I can't. Right now, we're board comments, so I mean, you have an opportunity to address the board. We can certainly have some discussion about it at that time. I think that you made your point.
Okay.
I understand that. I understand.
Okay, sure. Great. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Appreciate you giving the opportunity to speak.
Thanks.
Oh, board. I'm Mary Lewis. I'm not very...
Could you speak in the microphone? Just give us your name and municipality.
I'm Mary Lewis. I'm mom. My children go to Sacred Town Elementary in the life skills classroom. I'm sorry if I get emotional, but this is, like he said, extremely, it's going to affect a lot of families. I'm just gonna speak bluntly, how it feels for our families. It feels like, oh, we need to cut budgets, so let's pick on the special needs kids. Let's eliminate how many teachers? Eliminate and move the life skills classroom to Maplewood. That's exactly how it feels to me. Maybe it's not, but let me tell you something. We moved our, we removed our little boy from Maplewood Elementary School. He was four years old and they could not manage a four-year-old autistic, non-verbal child for an entire day. Every day, they would call us. Within two to three hours, oh, you need to come pick him up. He's, he's acting up. We can't handle him. He's just too much. The one time he was acting up, he threw a fit. How they dealt with it? They removed all the kids out of the classroom. They let Jackson have, go to town, tear the room up. I have video of it. And the first thing I asked when they sent me the video was, what are you doing? This is how you deal? He's four. My other children that were there could hear him running up and down the hallways. They could hear him screaming. They knew who it was by his voice. That, that's not how you manage. And this is just one child. So you can move life skills to the elementary, Maplewood, and you can expect those teachers to teach that? And you can eliminate those, those teachers right there? I am telling you, it takes a special person to teach special needs kids. Not just any teacher. You can have all the degrees you want, but it takes a special person with a special heart. And my child, when we moved him from Maplewood to Sacred Town and he met Margo, he met the staff there, it was a complete 1,000% turnaround because that child knew that they really truly cared about him. Yes, he's autistic, he's non-verbal, but they can sense, they can sense when somebody really truly cares. So I'm asking you, if you have to relocate, do not eliminate their jobs because you need them to teach them at Maplewood how to, how to do life skills. They are amazing. Do not eliminate their jobs. Are you nuts? I'm sorry, I'm gonna speak straight out. You're absolutely crazy. You have got the most amazing teachers right now. They are gold. Whenever I tell people, you know, my children go to Sacred Town Elementary and they're in the special needs, the first thing people say, oh, they have a great program there. They have great teachers. I know. And you're gonna eliminate that shame on all of you. All of you. You have no idea what you have here. Do not eliminate their jobs, please. It does affect so many families and the fact that we didn't know about this until just this morning. We didn't have 24 hours to give you for a five-minute speaking here. We just found out, this is nuts. This really affects a lot of families and they are amazing with them. So please, please, please reconsider. If you have to relocate, which, yeah, that sucks too. It really does. Because the kids, special needs kids, especially autistic that, I have two. I'm a mother of two. One is luckily going to the Barbara Center, so it's not going to affect him. But the one that we're adopting, it's going to affect him. So whatever you decide tonight, it's going to affect their lives forever. Because those teachers over there suck, straight up. I mean, I hate to say that and I do know that there were some that truly cared, but they don't know what they're doing when it comes to special needs. It's a complete different world. Complete different world. You have gold here, worth more than anything. So please reconsider them.
We thank you. Thank you. Citizens on agenda items.
I hope that the board seriously has further discussion about this tonight and the things that these parents are troubled by.
Let us know what you're talking about.
I also wanted to mention Policy 816. Policy 816 is up for approval as far as the agenda says. And there are significant and substantial changes in the purpose, in the definitions, and the content of this, and it should be considered as a first read, not up for approval. This policy was updated in March without a first read. And I believe that was only because there was addresses that were added that were considered Penpress domain, that were put on the policy, and so it wasn't up for a first read at all. But this is significantly different than just adding a website address. This is significant body change. And it should be a first read, not just up for approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name's Jessica Ashbaugh. I'm from Woodcock Township. I didn't come here planning to speak tonight, but however, at four o'clock today, we came with some disturbing news that apparently the special education program is being moved. And one of the things, and I'm not as educated as I could be, and that's frustrating because I would have loved to have some time to actually know that this was happening. And I don't know, like, how come like the public didn't know until four o'clock today? Or that's how it is? And maybe, maybe it's just a rumor. Maybe it's not actually happening. Because I would assume it would have come out Monday after the meeting. Also, one of the things I just want to double check is if anyone has worked in behavioral health that is voting on this. I know some people have, some people maybe have education backgrounds. Is everyone like that is voting on it, are we talking with the teachers to see what the devastating effects can be on children who are on the spectrum or have severe special needs? And what it does taking away primary caregivers and teachers from them? And that can be devastating? Has anyone looked at the research on that? And I understand y'all are gonna be doing some, you know, discussion afterwards and we can discuss it then. And if it's not for financial reasons, that's awesome. But keep in mind, don't shoot yourselves in the foot because you cut off the other. That's not gonna help us at all. Really quick, and maybe this isn't on the agenda, it was just circling around Facebook, but it had a Penpress logo on it. There's something about the librarians. I spoke in front of the board, I want to say, forgive me, I think it was October, and I was talking about the specials and how the kids were going on this cycle and constantly and they wouldn't see their gym teacher for like three weeks at the time and their art teachers and things like that. And one of the things I really mentioned there was, one of the things I really mentioned there was, it would be awesome to have a full-time librarian in both the elementary schools and high schools. We talk about book bans and things like that. Perhaps if we had full-time, safe teachers monitoring what children were doing, we wouldn't have had any of this issue to begin with. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Scott Wright and I am a librarian at Cambridge Springs Elementary School and also the high school. And I'm from Woodcock Township as well. And I just wanted to let you know to please think about tonight when you're voting on this with the libraries, because I would really hate to see a certified librarian not be placed in the elementary school. It's such an important thing for these kids to develop the love of reading from a certified librarian and to learn the things that they need to learn as far as library skills. And we're missing that right now because we're only there a short period of time. And also, maybe we could up the time to 45 minutes instead of 30 minutes a time when we meet with the kids and we would be able to do more of the lessons. But please think about that tonight when you vote on it. Or maybe table that to give parents a chance to hear about this. And I just learned about this myself and I just don't think it's a good idea. Actually, I know, and I'm a primary source because I live that job. So you should trust the professional who's up here talking to you. Please, do not do that to the kids. It's their library and they deserve to have it.
Hello, my name is Brad Sherman and I am a behavioral health technician. I have the pleasure of working closely with students in the life skills classroom at Sacred Town Elementary School. I would like you guys to please consider the effect that this move will have on these kids. The behavioral aspect of it is huge. You guys will be moving these kids from Sacred Town Elementary School where they already have established bonds and friendships with their classmates and with the upperclassmen around them. I walk down the hallway with my client and people tell him hello and high-five him and pat him on the back. This student is non-verbal. This year, I have seen him develop in amazing ways. When you guys move him to this other school, if this vote goes through, he's not going to have those friendships or those established bonds with anyone at that school. If this staff does not move with him, he will know no one except me. There are other students in this classroom who only respond to a male authority figure and Margo Crawl. That student is very responsive when he's misbehaving to Matt Kero. And that's the only other person. If you guys move him to this other school, Matt is not going to be able to go with him. How is he going to be controlled? Who is going to be responsible for that? Because if he's not responding, he is then going to become a danger to himself and those around him. He's not gonna have anyone there to help protect him. And if Margo is not able to go and these aides who work closely with these kids are not able to go, who's... who's it gonna be? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Do you want to speak? Yeah, you were walking down, I thought you were walking up to the podium.
No. I mean, I will speak.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Veronica Pippick. I work in the life skills classroom as a maid. I live here at Cambridge Springs. Do any of you have special needs elders in your family? Any of you at all?
You can make statements to the board, we're not gonna answer questions, just please.
If you do, then you understand, if you take an autistic child from a familiar, sorry. If you take an autistic child from a familiar setting, they know the teachers, they know the children, they know the aides, they know the school layout. You're going to remove them from what they know and put them in a place they've never been. With teachers, they have no clue who they are. They have developed trust and bonds with these people. And the amazing successes that these kids have had, from the time I've started working there until now, it's going to be set back. They are going to regress and it's going to be starting all over again. And it's going to be harder on them. They're losing the people, they are used to helping them. Please don't move this classroom. Thank you.
Hello. Sorry. There's a lot of unanswered questions.
I can start right now. I'll start. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Melissa Myers. My son Brayden goes with Margot Crawl and Greta is his behavioral help, you know, helper. Sorry, I'm not good with public talking. But basically, I feel the same way. My kiddo, you know, he's nonverbal, he finally, he's had Margot in them for, gosh, four years he's had them. He goes half-time to regular classes and he's with them the other half. He has changed so much just having them around. I'm a single mom of three kids, so that does all in different parts of the spectrum. I do this all by myself. They are basically my family. And that's all Brayden knows, his dad's not in his life. So it's just, all I say is, like, I didn't prepare anything, but all I'm asking is, if you don't have to, if it's one of the things, it's just, you know, a maybe, then I ask that please don't because I don't know what's gonna happen with my son and I'm terrified. I don't want to have to homeschool him because I'm not apt for that, you know, and I don't want to just send him anywhere. But I thank you for your time and please consider what we've said. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to be here. I'm Patty Perry, I'm the director for special education for quite some time. In case you missed it, the budget presentation up behind me is our continuum of services with Penncrest for all of our special needs students that we have in the district. We've got roughly 450 special needs students. They attend a variety of schools outside the district inside. We've had numerous conversations about the best place for our students to be are here in our schools. We pride ourselves in offering a variety of programs in the district so that we don't have to send kids outside the district. In fact, we house a number of IU classrooms that all Northwest Pennsylvania sends kids to. I would say that we have the best special education program of any school in Northwest Pennsylvania. And our goal is to continue to make it better and provide all those students with the supports that they need. This decision has been a conversation of administration for a period of time. We obviously make the decisions in the best interest of the students. We do not make decisions, financial decisions, for special education students, period. The reason, the main three reasons for the move is the majority of the students right now that are transitioning, the six students do live in the Maplewood attendance area. So three of the six families do live in the Maplewood attendance area. We are bringing two additional students from early intervention into that program. Additionally, we talk about the continuum of services. In other words, our seven to 12 program is at Maplewood High School. So the students, it was mentioned several times, how the students make friends as they move up through Sager Town, K to six. And then the seventh grade, we move them to Maplewood to start fresh. If we move the program to Maplewood, we have a continuum of services, K to 12. So as they make those friendships with those students, as they move up, they move into the high school with them, build stronger relationships and graduate with those students. The comments about Maplewood staff and students, they were almost demonized here this evening by a couple speakers. The Maplewood staff and students are caring, competent professionals. You know, I take offense to that to say that they are not. Additionally, you know, there's additional space in Maplewood High School. Sager Town and Cambridge Elementary Schools are very tightly spaced. We have numerous empty classrooms, I'm gonna say six to eight classrooms to provide additional support for those students. Those are my comments and I'm gonna say that, again, I think we have the best special education program in Northwest Pennsylvania. Patty, is there anything you'd like to say about, could you go up to the microphone, please? And again, the reason for starting now is so that we can transition those students and get them activated with tours and a variety of other activities.
Sure, I think you've covered most of the points very effectively. I will say that a lot of thought and discussion has gone into the decision to move students and when is the best time to move a classroom? You know, that's a great question. They won't, you know, students come in and out of the classroom all of the time. We can't wait until the perfect time to move the classroom, right? We have to take a look at the factors involved. And I absolutely agree, the staff that works in the life skills classroom is amazing. And Margot goes above and beyond every day with those kiddos. There's no question to that. And that's not our intention to rip staff away from the children who need that consistency in their life, right? Our target would be to help make this a smooth transition for everybody. We've had time to work with the Maplewood staff, to prepare the staff and the students for a transition, to help develop professionally some of those strengths that they may need to focus on, to work with the students in the classroom. You know, I think it could be, it will be a good transition for the students and the faculty. I also know that Sager Town Elementary will be very disappointed to no longer have those students in their classroom. They're wonderful students, they brighten your day, walk in the classroom and it'll make you feel better. But from a district standpoint, when is the right time to make that move? You know, we have six current students in the classroom that will be transitioning, that will be staying in the elementary level. And, you know, it appears that this is a good time to make that move, as hard as that may be to hear families. We want to make it smooth, we want to prepare everyone, even if that means taking some visits to Maplewood Elementary before the end of the school year, doing some tours, getting students in there over the summer, getting them to meet teachers, staff, administrators, those people that will be supporting Margot and her people in the classroom. I think it could be very beneficial and help with that transition.
Thanks.
May I please speak now?
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
My name is Jessica Swartson and I actually have, I have six children, six boys that go to the school district. And I have nothing but positives to say about it until I found out about this. I have two children with Down syndrome, one that is working with the IU right now, preparing to go into the Penncrest School District. And one that is eight years old and that has been with Margot for quite some time. And I, you have very valid points about moving the children in so they can grow up in the high school. But some of us parents might not have children that actually live to see high school. So that's not a concern for me at all. My concerns lie in the fact that that school is almost an hour from my home. I am recently a single mom of six boys. I have nothing right now. And Margot's been holding me down along with her classroom and everything else. I don't know if you've ever spent any time with her. She's an angel on earth. I mean, literally. And I will not, I can't even tell you the growth that my child has had with her. I was terrified to send him anywhere. You know, I cared for him by myself because his heart problems and it belonged to Down syndrome groups online. I'm not sure if any of you have been on special needs. You might want to take a peek into some of the special needs groups because it's all about school districts and what teacher did this? What bus driver, van driver abused their child today and the steps they take? You might want to like look into that kind of stuff because it's terrifying. And I can say without any doubt at all that when I hand Ethan over to Margot, it's like handing him to an extension of myself. She adores him and he will not. I was late this evening because he got off his man at 3:40 today. From 3:40 till the time I arrived, I was preparing him that I was not going to be there. And all it is is downtime right now. That's how long it took for me to get out the door, not comfortably. He's still not changed, he's screaming, disrupting the whole household. And if that's just for me to be gone one night for, you know, an hour, and my kid is not the only kid that acts that way, you're going to be disrupting an entire school. It is not a quiet time. And the respect that Margot and the other teachers at Sager Town show my child and myself because, you know, there's a lot of flack for actually carrying a child to a Down syndrome, unfortunately. They treat us just like everybody else. And Ethan has had so many more opportunities than he would have anywhere else. And I do not agree with what you're doing. I think maybe if you spent a little bit of time in the classroom and met our children and you could see the development that they make each day, every day because of what Margot has to offer. You don't just take somebody like that and eliminate their job.
So I appreciate your passion and I apologize for cutting you off.
I haven't shown you passion yet.
We're not eliminating individuals, all right? Number one, I know you look at me and the school board as cold, callous individuals.
No, no, sir, no, doctor.
Very seriously, Mrs. Feely is over there quite frequently. Our offices are joined, I see the kids walk past my office every single day. I know everybody that has kids in that room knows Mrs. Feely and has voted for Mrs. Feely as well and know that she would not make a decision that is, or a recommendation that would harm your children anyway. I just wanted to let you know, like, please don't look at us like we're cold, callous individuals trying to save a dollar because that is not what we're talking about.
Doctor, I apologize that you got that impression because I did not one time bring up any monetary funds. What I brought up-
No, I'm saying the general, it's kind of dressing.
No, I do not, I don't, please, sir, doctor, I do not look at you that way. I look at you, and I have nothing, I've met you multiple times, probably like handing out lunches during the pandemic. This district is amazing. I have not met one person that has not had our best interests. Like I said, I have six boys in elementary school. It's a little rough, it's a little wild. The staff is top notch. But I would have never even put my child in school if it was not for Margot. She stepped me. It's not just our children that have trouble with the changes. I can't, but Margot was just-
Would the board like to table this for a month?
I was gonna say-
Okay, so we'll table it for a month. We'll have some additional discussion. We'll reach back out to the parents. We'll set some time up where we can talk with Mrs. Feely, myself, and we'll report back to the board another time.
And then let's clarify-
You just stated you're not eliminating their jobs, but you're, what's sick is they're gonna make a bid for the jobs they've been doing.
We'll talk to you, we're gonna pull that from the agenda tonight. Sir, do you want to speak? I know you moved up.
Thank you for your time.
All right, come on. This is gonna be the last speaker, we're gonna go back to the meeting and anybody else who would like to speak can speak after the meeting, after the voting meeting, unless something is so pressing. All right, go ahead, sir.
All I wanted to say is Jackson is doing great with Crawl and I don't understand why this is going on. If it's the fact of just moving them, okay, move them. But the other teachers that are over there, get rid of them.
It's just because of the experience we had. I would avenge you, but that's just the experience we had.
Yeah. Is there any other pressing comments on agenda items at this point, knowing that we're gonna pull off that agenda items? Okay, I'm gonna-
You can always send the board whatever you wanna, let's hear in line and we'll be glad to read what you have to additionally have to say.
All right, I'm gonna move through the agenda, there will be comments at the end as well. Education report. For the sake of time, I'd like to have a consent agenda for item A, B, C, D, E, F, all the way through K, if that's all right. If you guys are okay with all the way through A through K?
On the education?
Yes.
Yeah.
Couple MOUs, smart boards, AG Lab resources. We discussed them on Monday, it didn't seem to be any controversy whatsoever.
Yeah.
No objection? All right, I'm gonna start at item A, student travel. Recommend approval of student travel as listed.
So moved.
All right, may I have a motion number two, second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item B, recommend approval of the 2023 graduates.
So moved.
Second. Motion number two, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I just want to say this one is one of the ones we're proud to do every year and this is one of my favorite approvals.
Thank you. Item C, resolve the board approves the K to 12 English Language Arts Curriculum, four to 12 Science and Social Studies.
So moved.
Second. May I have a motion number two, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, resolve the board approve the attached proposal and budget from Parkside Psychological Services for therapeutic mental health specialists.
So moved.
Second. May I have a motion number two, second?
Discussion, I was looking to table that one so we can, we can't even look at our I guess, we can't even see what that is or anything about it. It's got a cost of $85,000, just like to see what it is.
This is the therapeutic component. We have a therapeutic classroom that we run out of Cambridge Springs High School. It is staffed with a ES teacher and there's a mental health component. That mental health component is provided by Parkside. This is moving into our third year of the program. I think we have four students in there right now. Seven? We have several, several, almost listed with several students in there right now. So you can't have a therapeutic classroom without a therapeutic component. So this would be instead of hiring our own behavioral therapist.
It's just that without any I guess.
I can get your copies if you're comfortable.
No, all right, let's vote on it.
I can-
Done. It's for the kids.
Any final discussions? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item D, recommend approval attached MOU with Family and Community Christian Association. This is for our pre-K program, it's a continuum of our Title I program.
So moved.
Second. May I have a motion number two, second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item is very similar, approve the MOU for transition agreement with Child Development Center. This is our early intervention kids, pre-K kids coming to the school district.
So moved.
Second. Motion number two, second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Approve the attached book for 28 D for smart boards. This is, we are starting to replace our projectors with smart boards. They're relatively old and we're gonna target math instruction. So these smart boards will go to all math teachers.
So moved.
Second. May I have a motion number two, second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Uh, number four is the AgLab. We brought back the PA Friends of Agriculture Foundation AgLab. This is an agreement for Maplewood Elementary School, but there will be other ones, so I'd like you to approve one and that's an approval for the AgLab at both other elementaries as well.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item I, resource. Uh, there is a list of speakers that I'm asking you to approve.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item J, we're asking to approve the Lego Education Resource App. These will work with our coding and, um, electrical, uh, component Legos.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item K, we're asking for approval of the Northwest PAB Keepers Association Donation Book, The Way of the Light.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, item L is tabled. Um, I would say make sure that Mrs. Feely, myself, and others will reach out to their parents, um, for a meeting in the future. Item M, I resolve the Penn Press School Board to approve the following revisions to the school library programs. Reassign libraries to secondary schools. Approve the attached revised job description and direct administration to develop procedures for elementary library use and operation.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I would approve this. Uh, there's too many questions and I just see this as a more, you know, as the budget goes on, I can see some people wanting to make cuts and I just see this as one of those that are starting. And I believe that the libraries are very important to our young children and I, I think it's our fault they're not being utilized to their potential. So I would vote for it.
I would offer that item three says direct administration of adult procedures for elementary use and operation.
Haven't seen them.
I didn't see that. There's no intent for the kids not to aggressively use-
We can't hear what you're saying. Yeah, I don't think your mic's working there.
Is any change from whatever?
Oh, all I said was, uh, the administration is working on a plan to ensure that the kids aggressively use libraries. There's no intent to change that. So I don't, I don't agree that, uh, we have to have necessarily a librarian in terms of-
When I see the plan, I'll make a decision. I mean, I, that's it. I'm sorry, I just haven't stick with my guns. I've said I've been defending libraries since the day I got on the board and I'm gonna stick with it. I, I go with what I say.
Anybody else? We better get a, a roll call. All right? Roll call.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Chauci? Ms. Carl?
She said no.
Mr. Johnston? Mr. Ms. Tyson Wright? Mr. Wlaski?
Uh, yes.
Mr. D. Francesco? Six notes.
All right, the motion fails. Uh, we draw the board to approve the records. Approve the attached treasures reports.
Do we do facilities?
Uh, contract student transportation as listed.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve the attached parent providing transportation report, uh, for student A.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second? Discussion? Discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Recommend approval of the Cameron Springs High School walk-in freezer, uh, report.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, recommend approval of the Cameron Springs walk-in cooler.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we can try the treasure report again. Uh, recommend approval of the attached treasure reports.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, recommend approval of the attached disbursement.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item C, uh, resolve the Penn Press Board of School Directors approve the attached codes preliminary 23 for general fund operating budget and Noah's rates and authorize the business manager to prepare the PGD 2028 budget document as listed.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to vote on that.
Discussion?
Okay, I'm opposed. Can I ask a question on this? Uh, yeah, sorry. So, so on the, I just want to make sure I'm correct on this. Um, the preliminary budget, when we vote on this, we, do we still have the opportunity? Like, I think we need to, we need to go deeper on certain things. We need to, obviously, like even stuff we discussed tonight.
Yes.
So we still have full opportunity?
Absolutely.
So what exactly is the value-
So we're required by school code to approve a budget 30 days before we approve our final budget. This forces us to approve a budget, put it on file for review. So the budget, the 1028 will be up on our website. It will be physically at the office for citizens to come and review the budget.
For those tax increases.
Yes.
So I guess I, I will vote yes on this, but I'm not in favor of it as it sits. I believe we need to go harder on it. So, yeah, this is just for preliminary-
So preliminary budget, we are not obligated to, uh, change everyone.
We have a finance committee really coming up.
Yes, yeah, I just want to make it clear. June is when we'll do our final.
Any other discussion and, uh, questions? Okay, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yep.
Mr. Bryant?
No.
Mr. Chauci?
Yes.
Ms. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Wlaski?
Yes.
Mr. D. Francesco?
Yes.
Okay, um, item D, uh, recommend approval of the Food Service Management Company of Nutritioning, uh, and their, uh, associated budget.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, item E, recommend approval to exonerate, uh, the tax collectors.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item E, recommend approval, I'm sorry, recommend approval of the attached government software services for print of 2023, uh, real estate and per capita tax bills.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item G, recommend approval of the attached service purchase contracts for medical service rendered during the 223 school year.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item H, recommend approval of the attached codes to purchase cash register computers.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item I, recommend approval of the attached agreement with NPRC for rental of classroom learning space at SHS through 2025.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Objection?
Item, item J, recommend approval to accept a donation from a community for school supplies for our students.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Personnel, um, item A, recommend approval with the board point Dr. Erica Hollick as principal Sagertown High School effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, resolve the Penn Press, uh, Board of School Directors create administrative position of Penn Press Cyber Academy Principal and Director of School Safety and Security.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion? Uh, I think I'll do a roll call.
Do a roll.
I'll do a roll call, please.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
No.
Mr. Chauci?
Yes.
Ms. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston? Ms. Tyson Wright?
No.
Mr. Wlaski?
No.
Mr. D. Francesco?
Yes.
Six to three.
Item C, recommend approval to appoint Tom Baker to the position of Penn Press Cyber Academy Principal, Director of School Safety and Security effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion?
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
No.
Mr. Chauci?
Yes.
Ms. Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson Wright?
No.
Mr. Wlaski?
No.
Mr. D. Francesco?
Yes.
Six, three.
Item D, recommend approval to create the professional position of Penn Press Cyber Academy Student Success Coordinator Teacher.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item B, recommend approval of the attached resignations.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? All in favor, say, uh, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item F, recommend approval of resignations of all coaches.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No objections?
Item G, recommend approval to employ the following non-instructional staff as listed.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, support staff substitutes recommend, recommend approval of the following support staff substitute as listed.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Objection?
No objections.
Motion approved.
Item I, recommend approval of the following temporary summer employees effective until June 12th to August 4th at an hourly rate of $15.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No objections? Motion approved.
Recommend approval of the following volunteers, item J.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New business, item A, uh, first reading policies 800, 830, 830-dash-dash-1 do not need approval. They deal with new compliance of the Breach of Personal Information Act passed in November 22. Item B, recommend approval to eliminate policy 905 Citizens Advisory Committee.
So moved.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections?
No objection.
Motion approved.
Item C, recommend approval of the following policies, 816 social media.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, recommend approval to renew DSBA for the 234 school year and the policy meetings program and participation agreement as attached.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in the second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, uh, recommend approval of the motion to appeal the final determination of the right to no request.
So moved. So moved. Second.
We have motion in the second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item F, recommend approval to terminate the agreement with Kelly Services to provide substitute teachers effective June 30th, twenty twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
We have motion in the second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item G, recommend approval of the attached agreement with E S S Northwest to provide substitute teachers effective July one, twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
We have motion in the second. Discussion. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Announcements, we met executive session on May eighth, eleven for personal negotiations, litigation and potential litigation. We do have registered citizens' comments. Registered citizens get five minutes. Non-registered citizens get two minutes. Are you getting white hair?
Hello, I'm Reagan White here. I would first like to say I have a major amount of respect for-
Could you speak right in the microphone, I think?
Yeah, we can. Sorry. I would first like to say I have a major amount of respect for any of the parents, teachers, anyone who helped out, especially like his. Because I came here to speak and that was a huge deal I never even realized and probably way more important than what I have to say. But I know that voting is next Tuesday and the next month is Pride Month. And so I came here to talk about what the rising? Sorry. So I was here in February to talk about how I was bullied and affected me. And last year I had a great journalism teacher in Maplewood and CRT was a big rising topic at the time. And I was supposed to do a project on it for our weekly journalism. But the thing is, I found nothing on the subject last year. And with it coming back again this year with voting coming around, I wanted to look back into it and see what it actually is from the creators. So it came around in like the nineteen seventies and it primarily stands for the meaning to show a more balanced portrayal of our history, a non-white washed one. It is trying to say that the U.S. cannot eradicate racism and fulfill its future promise without facing its past. The thing is CRT isn't really affecting our K through twelve schools. But they're affecting the colleges where the students are mature enough to understand that our country could be so much more. This is a quote from James Baldwin I think some of us need to hear. People who shut their eyes to reality simply invite their own destruction and anyone who insists on remaining in a state of state on innocence long after that innocence is dead turns himself into a monster. This brings me to how some of us are closing our eyes and acting like homophobic and transphobia aren't a problem in our district. Acting like the school board hasn't indirectly bullied and saying we need to ban sexually explicit books from our libraries. And that passed in about January, I believe. But it's turning the LGBTQ books saying gender and sexuality is sexually explicit. If I tell you my story and that I'm queer and that you think that's sexually explicit, you have a problem. Young children even understand this. In the past, I had my girlfriend at the time over and we always have our neighbor kid over who was only four at the time. I introduce them to each other and explain this is my girlfriend. He was confused because he's only seen boys and girls together. But telling him I'm a girl and I can like a girl is not sexually explicit and he understood that. So this policy is affecting what should be a safe and accepting place for everyone. Lastly, I'd like to clear up some misinformation about a word going around. Indoctrination. Indoctrination is process of teaching someone to accept certain beliefs and not consider any other beliefs. Panther Press is a public school, a state school. There is a separation of school and religion for a reason. So that's state public schools do not indoctrinate children with religious beliefs. That is why there's private religious schools to teach students for one set of beliefs. I do not care what you think your God says. I do not care what you think your God wants. This is public education where your God doesn't matter, save for the church. LGBTQ students have been called evil by a school board member in the past because they want to force their beliefs onto us. They want to indoctrinate us, which is exactly what they're against. The difference between me speaking here is I'm here to help you open your eyes and realize what problems are going on. They're here so they can feel good about themselves by preaching the gospel and controlling children. That is all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Carla Brown, Cambridge Springs. I've spoken before about policy at these meetings and stated the belief that the best school policies serve as a guide to acceptable student behavior to provide a safe conducive learning environment. They should be as short and direct as possible, use plain language and not overlap each other. They should not assume the worst and they should only limit an aspect of education as a last resort. I have also stated that policy should be concise enough that there are no presumptions or misinterpretations about meaning or procedure. And the key practice with writing good policy is that if you narrow your language, you should ensure your scope is clear. I would like to add that policy, especially within a governmental agency like a school board, should, just like the law, consider the rights of everyone, but pay particular attention to the rights of the minority. From my understanding, minority rights are based on four pillars. Protection of existence, protection and promotion of identity, equality and nondiscrimination, and the right to effective participation. Another thing that I would like to say is that this board is allowed to, by law, add things to their agendas as long as it's within twenty-four hours. That was not necessarily a standing rule of order or practice within this board except for the last year. Within the last year, almost on a monthly basis, there have been things that have been added within that twenty-four hour period and people aren't afforded an opportunity to speak the way that they probably should be able to. There were three things that were added to the agenda within that twenty-four hour period just for this session alone. Policy eight sixteen, which was passed, the librarian issue and the issue regarding moving the special needs classroom. And apparently there are a lot of people who have a lot to say about those things and thank goodness that there were people paying attention so that they had an opportunity to stay tonight. With the remainder of my time, I would like to mention that Mark Giroux was in the audience at the work session meeting on Monday and he is here again tonight. I have to say, although I do not know him personally, I find myself missing his presence on this board. He was quiet and pensive. I have heard some members of this board over the many years that I have been here say that they learned something new that changed their thinking concerning issues before the board and while I do appreciate and respect that, I believe in all my years listening to this board and its members, Mark Giroux is the only one I have ever heard say publicly, we made a mistake. For my part, I am sorry and we are trying to fix it. That is a whole different level of humility from an elected official that is truly rare and is needed now more than ever. We need progressive thinkers on this board. People slow to anger and thoughtful. People who have conversations versus confrontations. People who are willing to listen and not waiting to talk. People who act as a matter of fact rather than personal opinion. Thank you.
These citizens, he's coming back, I'm trying to speak for two minutes about anything they want. It's on the agenda.
Hello again. I'm still wearing the shirt of the Panther Press. I'm not speaking on behalf of the press. I'm sorry again. My name is Lauren or Zorion Edwards. I am currently a junior at Sager Town High School and tonight I am speaking on behalf of the music department. I may not be a part of the music department right now, but I am a part of the marching band. Some students from the music department wanted me to ask you, who is taking the position of the music department next year since our current teacher, Ms. Graham, is not going to be there no longer? I feel like this is something you guys need to think about, especially since Ms. Graham was recently hired this year and you guys already had a lot of different people come in for that job, but still chose her over everyone else. I feel like there is a debacle considering music teacher. We, so chorus and band are two different subjects. Band deals with instruments. Chorus deals with voices. I don't think I need to explain this, but having one teacher do both jobs is almost exhausting. We may not have band and chorus every single period. We might not have one every other period. But they are both still completely different skill sets and although Ms. James, who was amazing, was able to perform both of them as amazing as she was, even she needed planning periods and a long time to figure out how to keep both of those things separate and yet still unified. I feel like we need to find a music teacher who is dedicated enough to perform one of those and then get another music teacher to perform the other, such as a chorus and band teacher? Huh?
Ten seconds.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Or you need to just just consider a professional with this position because our music department deserves a lot. Thank you.
Hi there. Catherine Edwards, Sager Town parent. Just to add on to what Lauren was talking about with the music program, I'd like to bring it to your attention that it was in October, okay? Seven months ago, that two students from Sager Town stood up in front of you and dressed you down for the lack of care that you've given the music program, for the deplorable condition of the instruments available. And you were embarrassed, I was here. Actually, that was the same meeting where all the teachers were there because we were going to give a contract. But that didn't happen either. Now, if you look at, I believe Luthia put out a piece in the Panther Press earlier this week about the physical condition of the music room in Sager Town High School with pictures. I suggest you look that up. There are, there is a garbage can because there's a leak in the ceiling. And it's got a nice sign on there so nobody moves it or puts garbage in there because that's for the water from the drip. There are pictures of how the soundproofing is coming down. There's a really nice part where she says, well, there was a hole there, so we just taped it up. Okay? You guys need to do something about it. You've had seven months. And when Travis Peters spoke on this in October, he did make a point to say that they hadn't had a teacher the following day or the day before, I'm not certain. This teacher who I'm learning is leaving now. That was when they started. And I do believe we started the school in August. And during that time period, they were expected to amuse themselves with a study hall. But these children instead decided that music was so important, they took it upon themselves to teach that class when you couldn't be bothered to hire somebody. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Brian Custer, East Mee Township. I hear a lot about separation of church and state. And I think it needs some clarity because separation of church and state has nothing to do with keeping religion out of school. Separation of church and state is not listed in the Constitution anywhere. Separation of church and state is ensuring that one religion is not promoted over any other. So that you could have a Quran here, you could have the Bible here, you could have any religion's book here because separation of church and state again says, no religion above another. Thank you.
Eli Skelton, Casawaga Township. I talked a couple of years ago about equity and inclusion training. Now more than ever seeing how lacking different people in, on the board and teachers knowledge is of racism of LGBT youth and of neurodivergence in general. I think that looking into equity and inclusion training is very important. I know that when I was in school, there was lots of racism and a lot of bullying of people on the autism spectrum and with neurodivergence. I know that there is still bullying going on. A student that's here tonight just spoke about their bullying. I followed up with them and I mentioned it again at another meeting. I'm not sure if any of you followed up with them. The bullying is happening and if you're not going to do equity inclusion training, you need to at least change your bullying policy or actually enforce it.
Jessica Ashbaugh, Woodcock Township. First, I'd like to apologize to the board. I was snappy earlier when I came up here. I let my anger get the best of me, so I am sorry about that and I do ask for your forgiveness with that. I do stand by what I said, though. A couple of people brought up the music department with Sager Town. I know that was something I had just found out about as well. For anyone that was at Sager Town on Tuesday, there was standing room only for the music concert for the third and fourth grade as well as the the band, I believe it was fourth, fifth and sixth. And what was amazing and awesome is the fourth, fifth and sixth band completely filled the risers. Not just normal music students up there, we had academics, we had athletes up there playing the trombone, you know, using a clarinet and it brought everyone together. Music brings everyone together. Music is a form of praise. You know, music is an amazing thing, art is an amazing thing and when we can work together and respect each other, we can do amazing things. I just want to see our kids get the best education, to be treated with respect. Whether or not you guys agree with each one of you, I know I personally could run for school board. I don't know if I have the bravery to do that. So thank you guys all for running and for being brave to do that. And please continue, just please treat each other and the children with respect. Thank you.
I just have a couple of bullet points real quickly. So I I need to point out that I think the bullying program is amazing here. I've had, I thought my child with Down syndrome was gonna, you know, come home crying every day. We walked down the hall and everybody's like, hey, he's doing high five, high five. Ooh, I could just sit with him. Amazing. And then I've had a child that embarrassingly has bullied another, handled beautifully. So I, I think that, you're doing pretty well. But my main point is I really hope that you do not think that I view you the way that you had thought I possibly did, the school board itself. I have very much respect for you guys. My children would not be in this district in separate schools if I did not agree with your decisions. But I'm also here tonight to help with those decisions. And I am very glad that you have tabled it to, you know, obviously there's strong interest in it and I think, you know, we can work together. Like that's, we're here for our children. It doesn't have to be a fight. You know, that what is best for them is, I think, I would hope is what we're all here for. And there's no need to waste our energy on arguments and stuff that just doesn't matter in the end. So that was really important for me to say. You have my full respect, you know, until you do something to lose it. But I am here to tell you what I know and to learn from you and we can meet in the middle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? More remarks?
Yes.
More remarks?
Sure. We skipped over motions or new business?
New business. New business.
Did I have some new business?
Yep.
I want to make, these are all budget related. First one is I want to make a motion that any items needing, needing to be presented to the board must be provided to the board ten days prior to the board's monthly work session. So we have time to actually read it and ask questions and understand. That's a motion.
One more second.
Sergeant.
That's, can I ask for clarification? That's on the entire budget? Is that what you're saying or on?
No, and, and-
I'm sorry, on the agenda.
If it requires-
Let's go through the discussion, don't discuss with each other, you're very discussing with the board. So who wants to start?
I'm just saying if it requires action by the board, we should be able to see it and let them read it.
Okay.
That's next.
I would suggest that the board make changes to a policy. We have a policy meeting and talks in there about when we put items on. I can tell you that there are items that we literally had the day of the meeting.
That's a problem. That's why I'm trying to-
I get you.
If there's exigent circumstances, I think we would all understand it, but a lot of this is not exigent. We know it's not. It's just poor planning, frankly.
I'm not, I'm not saying that there is a negative circumstances. But, you know, there's, there is a meeting that I can't tell you that I haven't had it, a coach to be hired or a volunteer to be approved or- a coach to be hired or a volunteer to be approved or a quote that came in.
I think we all understand that, but it has become just the norm that we get the stuff at the last minute and we're expected to vote on it.
I don't agree with that at all.
Yeah, well, that's what I.
I do not agree with you that at all. I try to operate in an air where there are absolutely no surprises to the school board. And I take offense to that, Fred.
Well, I'm sorry you take offense, but my motion stands that I think if the board needs to make a decision, we need to have the information 10 days prior. And if you want to add, unless there are exigent circumstances, you may.
All right. We got a motion, we have a second. And you have a new discussion. Do you have anybody else?
I think that's policy committee's got to fix policies, they didn't make the policy right. I've always seen everything by Thursday before the Monday meeting. I have all weekend to look over. I guess, I've been on the board for six years, this way, that. We've had no problems. And if we had a problem, we table it. We table it till the following month. We've done that quite a few times.
It is our practice that the work sessions go live Thursday by noon is our goal. And that all the attachments are to the board. Now, again, recently we have no internet access and I understand that. I've tried to keep the board up to date with, you know, text messages and a variety of other things. We can go back to dropping packets. We used to drop packets of information off, two, three-inch binders every Friday before, so there would be hard copies. I'm not trying to surprise the board or pull the wool over anybody's eyes regarding anything on the school business.
No one's suggesting you are, but I don't have the opportunity to read through everything, ask questions, and we're supposed to vote on it.
Well, maybe the other item is to structure our board meetings differently. We have a work session on Monday and then you've got, you know, you've got a voting meeting on Thursday. There are other ways to structure the board meeting where you have more time to digest information, such as the first Tuesday and the third Tuesday, or the Wednesday, second Wednesday and the third Wednesday. So I think we can structure our board meetings differently if the board needs additional time. But again, it's a tough turnaround for the school, for the central office to get all that information together. I mean, we hustle to get you the information as soon as possible. And I think every central office administrator would say that.
If I could say, the longer we have before we put things on, the more stuff that's gonna get added late. So if we say we want it 10 days or two weeks or whatever, you're still gonna want more time. That's gonna add more things added to the agenda. I think the week has been more than enough. And if there's something specific, if you read over the weekend from Thursday through Monday, if you have a question, then you can add a clarification there. I don't know how much more time the extra three days would make. And it seems limiting and micromanaging to try to put extra time on that when it's not been an issue.
Okay, I want to clarify something. The reason why our superintendent gets involved with the discussion because he is a member of the board. He's a non-voting member. So he has the right to speak, to make comments just like any other member. Okay?
See, there's a motion on the floor, though.
Now, there's a motion, this is second. Any additional information? All right. Let's have a vote call on that.
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Chaucie?
Yes.
Ms. Crowe?
No.
Mr. Johnston? Ms. Tyson Wright?
This is tough. Well, it'd be nice to get stuff a little bit early, but I also like Dr. Glasspool's idea about maybe just postponing the meeting for a more day. He doesn't say yes.
Mr. Wilefsky?
No.
Mr. D. Francesco? Six, three. Six votes.
Okay, I have another motion. That all the board actions that involve the expenditure of resources include the approximate amount of the expenditure as part of the action to be approved by the board. We asked for that a couple months ago. It happened one month and then they dropped back off. I think this is just. I'll make a second on that, sorry.
Would you repeat the motion so the secretary can write it down?
I'll give it a sec. All board actions that involve the expenditure of resources include the approximate amount of the expenditure as part in the action to be approved.
So maybe some clarity, like, let's just go down to the agenda. Item A, student travel. Do you want to know the cost of that student travel?
We ought to, there ought to be a number. We're gonna have to pay the bill, right?
Do you want to approve the 2023 student graduates? There's a cost for graduations. You want the cost to run three graduations? I'm not trying to be difficult, Fred. I mean, there's, everything that we do here involves money.
Right. And here's my problem. We exceeded the budget last year by 1.5 million. And I don't, yes, we did. And I don't recall, when we exceeded the budget, it didn't even come before the board. We just kept spending the money. What do you mean we didn't? I mean, it's red and black and white.
Okay, this is another discussion between two members. Okay? Just, you said your opinion, and we can go ahead with the other. Anybody else?
Yeah, I don't know where to draw the line either, Tim. Especially, some things we can click on, like the, for instance, we had the refrigeration for easier to click on and pull up the number. I think it'd at least be nice if we just stated when we're, you know, at a cost of, for every item that's possible. Graduation, obviously, something like that's hard. So I don't know that it's something we put in black and white necessarily, but whenever possible, I would like to, if that's what Fred's going off, if that's what I, I would like to just see a cost and just, when we vote verbally, this is gonna cost us. That's two cents on it.
So, okay, I mean, it's here. Like, let's say the mobile lab, the mobile lab is $3,600. Or 3,000 plus the $6 scholarships is $2,400. Do you want us to put in, approve the Ag Science Lab agreement, like, comma, $2,400?
That would be great for me.
We did that, but one month, we started doing that and we quit.
But it's in the agreement?
It's already. Something.
Well, like parent transportation, so we approved parent transportation agreements. We actually pay parents to transport those kids. Do you want us to like an estimate, like, we can get an estimate, like that parent lives 35 miles from the school, estimate 180 days to from 70 times, the IRS rate, put it on there? Okay. Can you want all that 10 days or?
Anybody else?
So now you're not giving the man enough time to do his job. Because.
We're not adding one ounce of effort.
Point of order, Mr. President. Back and forth. I point of order to the chairman.
I can't, I don't want to repeat myself, you know? No discussion between board members, okay?
Okay, we're not adding.
Point of order, Mr. Brown's talking.
I address the president. I'm the chair. Go ahead. What do you have to say?
When we say that we would like the information 10 days prior, it doesn't add an ounce of work. The information has to be put together. All we're saying is we need it earlier. It doesn't add one ounce of extra work. Okay?
I'd like to say a couple things. I think this motion itself is kind of hypocritical. You want the board to have the agendas, 10 items, 10 days in advance, you bring this up for the work session. So I think it's a little hypocritical to bring this motion up today. Secondly, I'd like to say that we have limited amount of time for our staff and our administration. I don't think they have ever felt that the costs have been hidden on anything. If there's something specific, like how much does it cost for this trip? We could ask, we get that. I don't think we need to be spoon-fed everything. I think that overall that we have enough information to just, and I've never had not enough time to go through it and never had a question not answered. And we did not go over the budget on $2.5 million.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
No, let's get this vote over with.
All right.
I need a second.
Bless him. He did second.
Okay, now we need a vote call.
Rock call?
Mr. Brooks?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Chaucie?
No.
Ms. Crowe? Mr. Johnston? Ms. Tyson Wright? Mr. Wilefsky?
Yes.
Okay, seven, two. Way out.
Okay. Anything else? I'll be honest with you, I don't know whether, you must have skipped the new business section.
It was there, we just.
I just took a pause.
Okay. That wasn't.
All right, let's go to board members. Mr. Brown?
Right, all right. Not that I have always been saying. Uh, see here, let's start off with Audrey and Lynn. Thank you for, I hope they're still here. Thank you for your keeping us posted from Panther Press and the pitchfork. You all did a great job. And to Cambridge Springs, tomorrow night being prom or prom to dawn. I want all the students and teachers involved, please be safe and have a great time. Hopefully you all make a lot of memories out there. End of year testing. This is from somebody who didn't really care about testing, but I know many of you put a lot of hard work into this and I want to say congratulations to those of you who finished. Hopefully you all did well. And the year's almost over, summer break for you. I want to touch on Mr. Ashbaugh and all his hard work with the Sager Town Elementary sixth grade play tomorrow night. And I know I'm going, he does a fantastic job, the students do a fantastic job. If you have a chance tomorrow at 7 o'clock, Sager Town Elementary Auditorium, they do a tremendous production and we look forward to that every year. I want to touch on Teacher Appreciation Week. To all the teachers out there, I try to say it every month. I want to reiterate, I know some people want to blame teachers, but being married to a teacher, I see how much work goes into it. And I want to thank you all tremendously. I know you go above and beyond many, many, many times, not only with your own heart, your hard work, your money, your time. So personally, I want to thank you all for such a great job. We went to, Mr. Stuporski and I went to the Republican Dinner Saturday night. We had a great time. We made a lot of great contacts. And I just want to say, overall, with the exception of two people, we had a great time and everybody was very professional. And it makes me want to get more involved with them. And I just, I don't know if anybody out there from that group will hear me, but thank you for the, just you guys, you were great with us. So appreciate that. And Dr. Glasspool, I know you kind of had a rough couple weeks with the internet being down, but to Amanda and Kristen, you guys did a fantastic job. And I'm about to rest the board and I know budget's tight, but if they get an extra day off for a long weekend and this is all settled, I think they work. So thank you, guys. I know you put in more hours than you can count. And there, I had a bunch, but I'm done, it's late. So like I said, Teacher Appreciation Week. For any students out there, if you haven't said it yet, thank your teacher. And everybody have a safe and wonderful rest of the week. And graduates, we'll see you in a few weeks. Thank you. Thank you. I know prom to dawn is tomorrow. Enjoy that. I know the other proms are coming up. Make sure you're safe. Make sure you enjoy yourself, but make sure you get home safe. It is Teacher Appreciation Week. I just wrote down a couple things here. Kindergarten had Ms. Watson, first grade, Ms. Hassett, second grade, Ms. Fozzie, who had a picture of a dead bear in her elementary school room. And said, "I get angry like that if you guys don't listen to me." Mrs. Miller, Mr. Wentworth, Mr. Randall, Mr. Bender. Mr. George Koch was the principal, Mr. Bill Hock was the principal. Those are all great people that shaped, for better or worse, who I am as a person. I look out into where current teachers are, I've seen so many of them growing up in anywhere from Tepelville, United Methodist Church, through Maplewood, through volleyball courts. I've seen so many people and they stay and they build their community. So thank you to all of our teachers. I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Howick and to Tom Baker for their new positions. Those are, we get congratulations, then you immediately get sympathy because these are our jobs, but you guys are the right people for the jobs. Thank you. And thank you, Tim, for the reminder on that. You know, it is budget time coming up, which is always difficult because this is where the rubber meets the road. And as a school board member, you live up to the, to what you ran on. And you wanted to do what it takes to do that. Something I'd like to suggest, we had six people vote not to change the libraries. I'd like to see maybe in our budget discussions, see what it would take to develop a new library system, maybe add another library, and see if, once again, if we're gonna do something instead of doing it halfway, let's do it the best we can. And that's one of the things. That was for the librarians, that wasn't for me. It's election season. Good luck to everybody that went out there and put their name on the ballot. I decided not to win this year, so excited for everyone that did run. And it's tough putting your name on the ballot and saying, "I want to do this. And I want to put my name out there and I want to be judged by my community." This area is particularly difficult for a variety of reasons, but when you're looking for who to vote for, you know, some of the things I like to say, going back to some of the stuff we talked about earlier, people are willing to do the research, you know? Don't come in thinking that you know everything because you don't. You're not gonna know everything for a long time. When you ask a question, listen to the answer. Remember, you're representing everybody. This isn't a partisan position. It's an election and you win the election, but this is not about party, it's not about ideology. This is about what can you do for your community in representing every single person, students, staff, employers, community members, everybody. One of the things that is tough about being on the school board is making tough decisions. They're not always popular. And I guarantee that anyone that ever voted for me, I've made the wrong vote according to them at least once. So be honest, be willing to take the tough votes, and don't just say stuff because it's easy to say, say what needs to be said. I've got a lot more stuff, but it's late. I don't want to get kicked by Tim. Just again, thank you to everyone that spoke. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your time on the board. Thank you, Mr. Jerome, since you got a shout-out earlier, I'll give you another shout-out. Ms. Ashbaugh, I didn't think you were snappy, but I did like saying you were snappy, that was a good one. Reagan, you can always come and speak and don't ever feel about whatever, don't ever feel self-conscious about it. And thank you to the Northwest Pennsylvania Beekeepers and to Andrea Palladis, who I know watches board meetings at home. It's all you, buddy.
I'd like to thank everybody out there for your passion and your comments. Being pretty much on the board, it's, yeah, you opened my eyes to a lot of different things and I just thank you for that. Congratulations to all the graduates. I'm gonna be biased, especially my niece, Abby Doyle, and Ben Gilberto, my nephew from Maplewood. I'm gonna keep this short. Maplewood Girl softball boosters are having a fundraiser Tuesday the 16th next week at Hunter's Inn, 10% off all food orders. And I'm just gonna say one thing about teamwork. But people have been saying a lot about teamwork and like I said, we can't be biased as a school board. We need parents' involvement, we need administrators, we need school boards, we need teachers. And congratulations, teachers, on your week. It's hard. It's hard to collaborate, it's hard to get together, to find somewhere we can succeed somewhere and agree upon something. But with teamwork, I thoroughly believe we have those hard conversations with each other to find out different aspects, perspectives. And the perspective should be the kids, obviously, but what's the best thing for the kids? And I wrote this down, teamwork divides a task and multiplies its success.
I'll be really short too, but I do want to thank all the parents that came out tonight and spoke to us. And, you know, hopefully we can work together on this. We sure don't want to do something that's one side and we want it to be beneficial to everyone. So hopefully we can work on this together. That's it for me.
I'm gonna keep it short too. I'm gonna keep on the budget. I've never seen anything like it. We blow past the budget and nobody says anything.
anything like it. Uh, we blow past the budget and nobody says anything. We spend $23,000 per student and there are tax increases as far as the eye can see. And we just keep spending the money. And we've got to start, uh, being fiscally responsible and figuring out where the money is going and how we can make good decisions that don't affect the kid's education, but brings this spending under control. What's it at? Is it, uh, 28,000, 30,000 per kid? I mean, that's where we're going. We just keep on this spending track.
Just wanted to thank everyone for coming out. It's been a long night and appreciate just standing, uh, with us here. And, uh, a couple of things that I wanted to mention, kind of thinking, adding up with Mike's, uh, talking about teamwork. And, um, it does, it does really take all of us working together. So we really appreciate hearing what you have to say when you come out. I know we can't answer you back. It's not the way that this works here, but we do hear you and we take into what you're saying into consideration. Um, this last, well, I guess a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go into Maplewood High School and meet with juniors and seniors. Uh, you know, have you ever gone to like a fast food restaurant and they're always asking you like, how did you do, you know, how was our sandwich and how was our service and everything? Well, that's what I wanted to do at the high school. It was an excellent opportunity. We all had a great time and I learned some very important things. Um, one of the things, Dr. Glasspool was with me, one of the things that the students really wanted back was the valedictorian. So some of the things that they requested were things that didn't cost any money, things that were simple, but they were very passionate about. Um, and then the thing was more unit studies, uh, such as the Business Week that they had. They thoroughly loved that. They found out more about what their passions were and things that they were interested in. And many of these, these things do not even cost the district any money. Um, so it was really neat to get their feedback and I, I plan to continue doing that every month, going into the high schools and talking to the juniors and seniors, having lunch with them and, and seeing what they, uh, what they think. Just one more thing I wanted to mention, because I talked to a teacher this last week and then also Debbie Miller bringing up about the supplies. And, uh, being a teacher myself in the past, I've had that issue too. And, and I know the teachers don't want to ask and they don't want to talk about it. They just want to go get whatever supplies they need and not make a big deal about it. But I really do think, like, my talk about the teamwork, I think we need to address that and have less money carrying on the teachers' pockets for new supplies under those last organizations, even around towns that would be more than happy to help teachers with those, um, supplies. And, uh, so anyway, I think that's something that we could definitely be working on. I'll get to keep this right. Thank you.
Teresa, are you there? Do you shoot me comments?
Yes, Howard.
Thank you. All the advantages that I have is that I've been the best speaker. I don't have to say anything that's already been said here. So I came up with a, a different topic. And they are important people in, in the world, like teachers. But in my opinion, not as important as mothers. And, and the following is why. Mothers are the first educators, the first mentors, and truly it is the mothers who determine the happiness, the future greatness, the polite ways and learning and judgment, the understanding and the faith of the will ones. They also are guardian angels for the children, always loving and supporting them. Because she is the first person a child sees after birth, every youngster holds a particular place in their heart for their mother. This is why child and their mother will have such a strong attachment. The mother is the most prominent figure in one's life, who keeps giving without expecting anything in return. A love is selfless, which we can never, ever receive from anyone else in, in our entire life. She loves even when you are unhappy with yourself and it is her affection that makes you a better person. A mother plays multiple roles in a child development. As asked, she is a teacher in every aspect of the child development of all, social, emotional, physical, and independence. A mother has the most special place in our hearts and our lives, since the birth of a child, a mother forms a precious and special bond with a child, without thinking about herself as she thinks about her child and, and his happiness. She works day and night for her children so that can she make it them happy. A mother is special because her place is irreplaceable in every stage of one's life. With each day, her importance is varying in, in every department of your life. Of your simple, uh, life simply grows and that's what makes her the most important person in your life. She gave birth to you, to us, and all your life, you should be forever grateful to her. High importance the mother. Would there be a world inhabited by humans without her? Would there be a school without mothers? Well, Sunday, and, and keep this in mind, is Mother's Day. When you see yours, let her know how much you appreciate her. I wish I and others could do the same. Have a very happy Mother's Day this coming Sunday and every following days after, of the, of the year. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job, Luigi.